Everyone, if I could have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It's good to see y'all on this beautiful February afternoon. It's been a little misty and overcast today. Sun's popping out because we are here and we're going to do the work of the city and that deserves to be.
There you go.
Sun to shine on that. We do have agendas here. If anyone wants to follow, follow along, you can grab an agenda. We've got a couple of things going on tonight. We do have two public hearings and I'll turn that over in just a few minutes to start that public hearing. Then we'll go into our council workshop and I do like to remind everyone that the workshop is always on the first Monday of the month unless that's a holiday. And during the workshop, we don't vote on anything except the agenda. We're just merely discussing items that we'll, we'll be voting on later in the month. And then we do have one action item that we need to take care of following our workshop. We'll go into a special call meeting for one action that is time sensitive. So, so a lot, a lot of moving parts going on tonight. I'm going to go ahead and turn the, the program over to our city attorney. Rob, you want to go ahead and conduct those public hearings for the two that we have on the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing we have tonight is an application submitted by staff of two units, that's it. Application P two two four dash zero zero four six. The request is to zone 4.96 acres located on Carpenter Road, close to a light industrial, residential, professional, for seventy-two unit apartment. This time I'd like to ask the council the conflict questions. Have any of the applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of property, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest, any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of property, whether it is a positive or negative impact?
No.
Prior to taking a public comment, I'm going to ask for Hillary to come up and explain what this question is all about.
Thank you. Mr. Coons, and I don't think he is here tonight. As Rob was stating, he is wishing to rezon the five point nine six acres from wholesale light industrial to RP residential, professional. This is off of Carpenter Road. It's the new road that's been put in. He has named it Carpenter's Place. He will have two-story building with thirty-six units in each building. He will have one hundred sixty-one parking spaces and one entrance and exit. He will also have a swimming pool and a pool house. It will be a similar type to what Apex Apartments that's just north of this property has. Water sewer is available at this site, but it will be at the developer's expense to tie on to this. This does meet the comprehensive plans character area requirement for residential. Therefore, this is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Planning commission.
I'm sorry. Planning commission does recommend approval of this request.
All right. At this time I'd ask everyone here to like to be in favor of the application. Everyone here to talk to the public. Public comment, ask that public to be.
I do have a quick question of Loretta, if that's okay. I know you mentioned there's just one entrance and exit and I can see it on the, it's in our packet box and also sit on the poster here. I know that we asked Apex to have two. Is that because of the number of units? Why is this one okay with one?
Probably so. I wasn't here when Apex developed, but that, but they have a lot more units than the seventy-two.
Because of the number of units? Okay. And so that, just that one entrance and exit is adequate for the number there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Loretta.
All right. Next public hearing, an application submitted by Matt Seal Coleman, Matt and partial over two zero three, two zero four six. Requesting rezoning point two three acres located two twelve West Burkinian Street from R E plus ten, first. Question. This time I ask the council conflict questions. Have any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least $250 to any campaigns for election during the past year?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of property, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest, any real property that would be affected by the proposed rezoning or reclassification of property, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Again, I'd like to ask for the council what this is about.
Rob.
Thank you.
Rob.
Yes.
Possibility.
You have a conflict?
I mean, I have some property nearby.
You have property nearby?
Yeah.
That would be a conflict.
Okay.
Okay. As he stated, she is trying to open up a daycare. This is a vacant piece of property. She would be building a new building on this property. It would allow the keeping of possibly forty-eight to sixty kids depending on, her engineer is, first it started out being a six thousand something square foot building, but her engineer is working on, he thinks he can reduce that to five thousand plus or minus square feet. But she may not have, be able to keep the forty-eight kids, but whatever the state allows and she will have to have per the city codes, one hundred square feet per child for playground area. But she will be working with, with the state and with our department to make sure that she meets all the codes. Ms. Coleman has been in this business for twenty-three years. She will have the park, bus parking and unloading will be in the rear of the property. The playground area will be fenced off according to the state requirements on the side of the building. She's proposed to have seven classrooms. That may be reduced also. It just depends on what the engineer comes up with. It does meet the comp plans' character area. So it's for old neighborhood development. It's consistent with the comp plan. The planning commission recommended approval with one upstaining. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Does this qualify for any of the enterprise and opportunity zones and stuff like that?
No, ma'am. It's out of that.
Okay.
It's north of Central Avenue on Thirteenth Street.
Okay.
It's in the area, they have some mobile homes in the area and there's some single-family homes. Some of the homes are boarded up. They're vacated, but this particular lot is vacant. It's on the corner.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. Thank you, Loretta.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time I ask, does anyone in the life of the state, in favor of the application? Like, obviously. MJ, I might comment, you know, while you were conflict, I don't know how to doctor where your property is, but if you think that this rezon, reclassification would positively affect your, your property, negatively affect your property, then you, you know, you would have a conflict, would not be a vote. So, there's no impact on your property, then you would not have conflict. Where there's no further comment, I'll just pump here to be closed.
Okay. All right. Did, um, did you want to say in favor? Good, okay. Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I just want to make sure. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we are calling to order our council workshop. Gentlemen, you have the agenda that is in front of you and that was sent to all of us last week. So we've had a chance to review that. So I'll take a motion concerning that agenda.
Who do approve?
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That does carry. All right. Our first presentation tonight, I'm going to call on Justin Elliott with Malden and Jenkins and he's going to talk to us about the 2024 audit presentation. When I first saw you, Justin, I thought you were Brian Outwater. Does he not look like Brian Outwater? When I glanced at you, I thought, what's Brian doing here?
Oh, boy. I hope it's good. I don't know. Hope it's a good thing. Well, I, I think I'm here to, I got two different documents that y'all should have.
We do.
Okay. Good, good. All right. That's first thing. All right. So I'm going to basically be handling with the auditor's discussion analysis. That's basically where I'm going to recap the majority of the audit and what, you know, some of the highlights, so you keep it, I don't want to, you know, take up too much of your time. It sounds like y'all have a busy night ahead of y'all. So I'm going to jump right into it. You know, the first couple pages, y'all probably seen this ADNA a number of times, you know, gives some fun facts about the firm, things of that nature, but I'll jump straight into it. So you can look on page four of the auditor's discussion analysis, kind of hits the, you know, highlights of the independent auditor's report. As you state, we conducted, we conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards and, you know, as a result, when we, we were able to thankfully and happily issue an unmodified report, a clean, a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance you can get from your external auditors. So that's a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
Yeah. So that's, and then the next thing on the agenda is there, uh, there are no findings. So that's another great thing.
Yeah, it is another great thing. Wow, Larry. You are really working hard this year.
Yes.
This is great.
I did good. Yes. So that's, you know, based off that, kind of highlights the independent auditor's report. Flipping over, I'm going to kind of, talking about the numbers now. I'm going to kind of keep it mainly to the general fund, considering that's the majority of your operations, you know, majority of your activities and things of that nature. So to keep it a little bit easier, pages six through, I think, nine, there are a number of graphs and charts you can look at, you know, as, as I'm presenting to see if you've got any questions or things you want to bring up. The very first page, you'll see the first graph, the general fund revenues. As you can see, about fifty percent of that is from your taxes, property taxes, and even probably a little bit more than that, probably about seventy-five percent comes from all your private, you know, taxes, including your sales taxes and things of that nature. That's very common for a city of your size. Nothing, nothing jumps off the page there. So that's, uh, flipping over, also, as you can see, fifty percent of that, your total revenues were seventeen million, which is about the same as your total expenditures in the general fund, which was about seventeen million dollars. As you, so on the second page, you, on number seven, you can see that the vast majority of your expenses are for public safety, which includes your police and your fire department. Again, nothing unusual here. So that's very common. And a close second, not close, second place would be your public works. Very standard, again. And as you can see, this shows you a, a kind of a depiction of your last six years at the general fund. As you see, it keeps growing, your revenues are getting higher and you're, you're, I think this year you kind of had a jump. You had some transfers in, I think it was related to your ARPA grant. So that's, you know, I think y'all had some good things going there. But that's still, regardless, you still had a very, very good year the last, the last six years and a lot of, uh, a lot of positive signs. So as you can look on the next page, on number eight, you can see the last six years, you've had nearly ten million dollars of growth in your fund balance. Another good thing. That's something to be proud of. Also, on the bottom of page eight, you can also see there's a historical amount of your fund balance. As you can see, the wider, there's a, there's a, you should, there's a fund, fund balance and your expenditures. As the, uh, the wider the gap between these, as you can see, back in 2019, they were much, they were, they were pretty far apart. The wider they are, the less leverage the county has or the, you know, the city has when it enters the next fiscal year. As you can see, it's nearly almost touching each other in 2024. So y'all are moving in the right direction, which means y'all are not in a position where y'all have less leverage. So that's a good thing. Looking over to the very, the next page, you can see that you have nearly ten months of fund balance, which is, is a good thing. That's a, when I say that, that means you have enough fund balance to cover nearly ten months of expenditures if, you know, if anybody had any questions on that. Nothing unusual. And then there's some more information here about your government, I mean, your business type funds. They were all, had very positive results as well. We can jump into those if you would like, but for the most part, they all had continued improvement, your cash and your investments continued getting bigger every year. So that's another good thing.
All right. And just, just to let folks that might be watching on YouTube or for the record.
Yes.
Those business type funds are water fund, sewer fund, gas revenue, solid waste in the Tifteater.
Correct. Everything, everything is good there. Nothing, that, nothing is, is pretty consistent for the previous years. So that's it, you know, we can drop, we can dive into that. But there's a few other noteworthy things I'll, you know, want to bring up. Over the last ten years, I noticed on your, um, your pension, y'all have been within my funded status of fifty, fifty percent up to ninety, uh, ninety-two percent. So that's a very good improvement over ten years. So that's something to be proud of there as well. So as you, there's some more information here about the required communications, nothing significant, nothing significant. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We had no, you know, adjustments that weren't posted by management, no independence issues, nothing of that nature. We did have a single audit of your federal programs, basically, which is you had nearly six million dollars in federal grant expenditures. We had no issues there, no findings, another good thing. If you don't have any questions, I want to make sure to thank Larry and his team for all their hard work. They, you know, we couldn't have done it as easily as we did this year. I think this is probably the, the smoothest audit we've had in the past number of years that I can remember.
Well, it's about time.
I mean, it's always been, it's been good. I say it was, it's getting better and better every year.
I know. So.
We have a question. We call Justin to make sure.
There you go.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, we prefer that. You call us immediately so we don't have to work, you know, so.
So we appreciate you being available.
Well, of course. Anytime. It helps. Well, just let me know if you have any more questions, but if y'all have any questions, um, you know.
Any questions?
I'm pretty pleased with the, with the findings there.
Yeah.
Yeah. No findings is a good thing. Clean opinion. All right. Well, I appreciate it. Y'all have a good, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Justin. We appreciate that. And pat on the back, Larry, to you and your team in finance office. That's, that's really, that speaks very highly of, of y'all. So we appreciate that. All right. Moving into new business, I'm going to call on our city attorney, Rob Wilmot. We talked about this at our last meeting. This is the resolution supporting our participation in the South Georgia Energy Authority and that's also what we'll have the special call meeting for afterward. So, Rob?
All right. I think, I believe it was Matt Seal that came the other day that presented to you all about this idea. Basically, the, the issues that I think the cities are having is the supply of gas on this lateral line from Albany to Douglas. It's, so the idea of creating this authority is just like any other authority, like the downtown development authority, who's got all the powers of an authority such as to issue bonds, um, you know, contract, do projects. I've, I briefly reviewed the proposed legislation and, and I don't know exactly where it stands right now up there at the Capitol, but the, as I understand it, there will be nine members of the board and they would be either the mayor or the designee of Ashburn, Douglas, Fitzgerald, Ocilla, Sylvester and Tifton. And then those board members then elect three additional members as long as they have experience in economic development. So there really isn't anything, I think, is, is, was discussed by Matt. This is really giving you nothing more than a seat at the table and on the board. We talked a lot and he talked a lot about the various laterals and the need that they have, particularly in Douglas. One of the things that, um, right now, the city of Tifton, you know, has an adequate supply. However, you know, if we were to get a large manufacturer here who would require a great deal of gas, we wouldn't be able to provide that, that industry because we don't have that volume of gas. If that, would that ever happen? I don't know. But the idea would be that, you know, the, if the authority is created, then among the board members, they would decide, okay, what type of a project do you, do we think that we might need and construct? And it would be up to the authority to finance that, either, you know, through the issuance of bonds or notes or things of that nature. As I understand it, it's, again, just like any other entity, it's its own entity, it's going to operate itself. It's just giving the city of Tifton an opportunity to participate in discussions about proposed projects. Certainly be my recommendation that we appoint someone who's knowledgeable from our standpoint in the gas business, you know. I don't know if they could put up with Adam or not, but he would be probably a good fellow.
We could ask him to try.
So, you know, although there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the proposed expansion in, of this line, that's not something that we're talking about tonight. It's really just the creation of the authority and given the city of Tifton, you know, being on the board and discussing and making decisions about projects. And then of course, ultimately, the authority would deal with either issuing of bonds should they decide on a particular project. So again, I'm not really certain where this legislation stands right now, but the resolution is basically saying, hey, listen, we want to, we want to be a part of this. So I think that's pretty much in a nutshell.
There you go. All right. And from my understanding, one of the reasons we're having the special call meeting afterwards is the, um, the resolutions from the participating communities needed to be in the hands of the legislator that's carrying this bill in the next few days. So that's why we wanted to go ahead and, and get this handled.
That's right.
So we can get that to them. I, I can't remember if I've shared this at the last meeting, but I did speak at length with Brian Marlowe, who you know is the executive director for the Tifton County Development Authority that does mainly industrial development, who confirmed we had expanded capacity. He could potentially bring in additional industry that would be beneficial to the, not just to Tif County, but our surrounding area. And I'd love to see Adam Cobb serve on that board as, as a member of ESG and understanding natural gas and, and all that comes with it. And I'm hoping that this board, once assembled, will allow Brian Marlowe to sit as one of the economic developers. He said he would, if they would permit that. So lots of good information. So it just puts us in a good position, I think, for industrial development. All right. Any other questions of Rob or anybody about the, okay. All right. Moving on. Larry, do you want to talk about the resolution authorizing the transfer of the six-plus acres on Old Omega Road from the city to the urban redevelopment authority?
Yeah. This, this goes back several years, you know, to Captain's Point. You know, when we bought property over there, we bought twelve acres, I think in two, six-acre plots and, uh, and cleaning that up over there. And we sold six acres to a developer and he put in those apartments. And now we have the other six acres that's still sitting there. So what we were talking about is transferring that over to the URA for them to develop it for housing and let them handle that. The original six acres that we sold to developer, we sold it for four hundred twenty-five thousand. So we got the majority of our money back from the two purchases of the, the twelve acre. So we probably have a hundred and fifty thousand in this last six acres. So it's just a matter of transferring it over to URA and let them handle it and develop it, you know, with some housing in that area.
Does the URA have a developer in mind that they're going to use?
Uh, well, we rode up to Atlanta and looked at some tiny houses, I guess you want to call them. Didn't know where it would be affordable for, for low-income housing. And, uh, you know, the ones that were about a thousand square feet were suitable for developing. So we're still looking at different options on that and the URA board is. So they are searching for the right fit for those six acres, but it, it will be smaller type houses that will be affordable. I think that's the main.
Yeah.
Idea behind it. So they're, they're still exploring that. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure once they get the acreage that they will move along quicker with it since they will be in control of that acreage, so.
No, no. MJ, it's on the urban redevelopment.
Yeah. That was kind of our, talking to these different, uh, different organizations coming in, proposing different things to us, kind of tight the way we could move because we kind of bind it because we didn't have full control of the property.
Right.
So we know if we could be possibly sell it to them or whatever we're going to do. So now with this, if this happens, it would be easier for us to have more things, people to choose from and things to look at.
Exactly.
Deeper conversation.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions, comments on, on that six-plus acre? Okay. All right. Moving along, we have a proposed budget amendment from the Main Street program. So Hillary, let you tell us what's happening.
And Mayor and Council, um, just to kind of help to paint a picture and then to explain why the budget amendment is needed. This past year in 2024, our downtown saw an increase of events and people attending our downtown, whether that's opening businesses, attending events or just staying locally by being tourists. Last year, our downtown hosted over ninety-four events. Forty-five of those events were hosted by the Main Street program and then the others were at the Tif Theater for Performing Arts or outside organizations such as Think Tifton, Arts in Black, Juneteenth. So that's what we're category, categorizing as outside groups. And through that, you know, we saw over two hundred thousand people attending the events. And in 2023, downtown hosted just fifty-two events. So that is an increase of over forty events in just one year. People are starting to see the benefit of hosting their events in downtown. And because of that, we're seeing businesses open and relocate, moving to bigger storefronts. One of our businesses actually here on First Street, Divine Skin by SOS, she will very openly tell you that she chose to bring her business specifically to downtown, specifically to that location because she saw the activity of Second Saturday, she saw the activity of our First Fridays. So that just kind of helped proves that, you know, we're, we're doing a good job, we're doing what we were placed here to do. With the budget amendment, it's, would allow the Main Street program to continue to operate at full force, would allow me and my role to continue to create events, be innovative and also serve the public while giving the merchants events that they are very specifically asking for to see. So hopefully in your package, you were given a list of those new events that we would like to see be brought to our downtown community, being offered by our Main Street program, but also helping us prepare for events that we did take into consideration when we were planning for our budget this time last year, um, one of those being our First Friday concerts in Fullwood Park. We knew the stage was going to be renovated. We just didn't see it happen on the timeline we thought it was going to happen. So after Rhythm and Ribs, the stage in Fullwood Park will be under construction and it will not be available for use until fingers crossed in September. So I did not believe that it would be fair to the community or to our businesses to cancel that event just solely because we don't have access to a stage. So in that budget amendment, you will see that we're outlining, asking for funding so we can rent a stage, we can now rent bathrooms and bring that event to First Street until we have access back to the park. You will see that the amendment is asking for thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and that would be spread out through advertising, the events, promotions and designs and supplies. That again, would just allow us to continue to operate, all wheels turning and hopefully just seeing an increase in people coming to downtown.
Okay.
Well, Hillary, first off, happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is that your birthday?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you. Thank you.
But I want to personally thank you for everything that you've done downtown and bringing these events in and from my standpoint, you know, all will have.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did I?
Thank you.
Twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one? That's how.
Twenty-one? Is that how old you are?
Mm-hmm. Let's be friends.
Again, okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Any other questions of Hillary, comments? Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Appreciate that presentation.
More events that she has in the next five months. So she's really got things going downtown. And, uh, the Main Street program is completely funded by the Hotel Motel Fund. And we get in like 800,000 a year on the Hotel Motel Fund. So this is a perfect place to generate tourism downtown Tifton. And, and Hillary's doing a great job coming up with activities to have downtown.
Perfect.
I have just one thing.
Sure.
Um, Larry and Julie has heard me talk about this. Um, in the Main Street world, we 100% believe in never, you know, recreating the wheel. Let's just add to it to help it run a little bit smoother. Um, so one thing that we're extremely excited to offer this year in our downtown community is a downtown discount card. Um, like Larry said, um, Main Street is operated through Hotel Motel. So when we put a head in a bed, that's what brings in our dollars of operation. So this year, I really wanted to put focus on really trying to capitalize on bringing those people to downtown more than what I already am. And so we're going to do that by creating a downtown, um, discount card. And we 100% saw the success that Downtown Perry was having with this and felt like it could really work well in our downtown community. So right now we have over 20 of our downtown businesses that have committed to offering some sort of a discount to people that are staying in our hotels, our motels, our Airbnbs. Um, whenever somebody hosts a conference at the UGA Conference Center, we're going to deliver a stack of the cards for them to go in the goodie bags in hopes of bringing those people to downtown. Um, actually, some of our hotels are offering a 10% off discount the next time you come in and stay. So just really trying to find a way to capitalize on that partnership with our Hotel Motel funding and really just trying to get those tourists to spend their dollars locally and to continue to come back.
Perfect.
Yes, so we're very excited and I really just wanted to share that because I'm very proud of our merchants for starting to see the value of our program and, you know, capitalizing on moments like that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hillary. It's all good news. We have another budget amendment request for mosquito control.
Yeah, this is, uh, another thing that I think that's needed. We've contacted Astro out of, uh, Baldasta and they'll spray, uh, on a schedule where they'll catch every street in the city of Tifton for one month. And I think one month is $3,300. So, uh, it's a contract for eight months period from March through, uh, October, I believe it is.
Okay.
For eight months, but for just this fiscal year, it'd just be four months. So that's what the amendment is for, 13,200. That's for four months spraying for this fiscal year.
Okay.
But we'll have to sign, I think it's a two-year contract. So we would have, uh, another year and a half on that contract for spraying for mosquitoes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Uh, this is something that's much needed. I know a lot of citizens will be happy with this. I've had several constituents reach out to me about us not having a mosquito truck and we used to. So no, I'm, I like the idea.
Yeah. Well, I asked Adam to get a material safety data sheet on what they're spraying and make sure it's safe for the public. So, uh, we'll assure that's done, so.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Um, Rob, quick question. I remember us talking about this through service delivery negotiations a while back. Are we paying for that already or are we not? Did that come out of service delivery? Do you remember?
We discontinued our inter-local agreement for mosquito.
For that, okay. All right. I couldn't remember what the decision was.
That's been a while back.
Yeah, I remember. I just remember the conversation. I just couldn't remember the outcome. Okay. Okay.
But, uh, one, one other item on that, we, we have contingency money in the budget, so we won't be adding to the budget. We'll just be using some of those contingency funds for this 13,000.
Perfect. Okay. All right, good deal. Any, any questions, gentlemen? Any comments? Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right, now I'm going to call on our HR Director, Jocelyn Park. She's going to talk to us about amending the city's retirement plan for a retroactive technical correction.
Good evening. Um, first I'd like to apologize for my voice. I am a basketball aunt and Tifton County took on the Lawrence County Vikings and we brought it home. Excuse me, I do apologize. Um, yes, GMA just made a grammatical error where they mislabeled our rule of 75 and made it a rule of 80. So that rule of 75 is basically a combination of the years of service that a police officer or firefighter has, um, in combination with their age to equal 75, which allows them to have a normal retirement as an alternative.
Okay. So just some housekeeping correction.
Yes. Yep, everything else stays the same.
All right, and that, that letter from them is in the packet and all the information there. So any questions? Y'all good? Okay, thank you, Jocelyn. All right, uh, now we can talk, uh, about the, um, rezoning applications that we have before us that were in the public hearing earlier. Uh, the first one is that request to rezone the 5.96 acres located on Carpenter Road from wholesale light industrial to residential professional for the 72-unit apartment complex. Is there any discussion we need to have or any questions you might have for Loretta?
I mean, in that area, that it already has, you know, apartment.
Neighborhood, yeah.
I mean, it's.
Okay. All right, seeing no other comments, uh, let's move on. The next one is the second public hearing and that was, um, for rezoning the .23 acres at 212 West 13th Street from R8 to Neighborhood Commercial for the construction of a daycare. Any questions or comments for Loretta on that particular application?
I'm just, um, I'm in favor of it. Uh, I walk the property and, um, I think it's, it's good for the neighborhood.
Okay, very good. All right, any other comments, questions? Okay. Uh, Larry, we'll turn it over to you to discuss House Bill 581.
Okay.
Well, I wrote some numbers back. Get the idea of what we can do for it.
Thanks, sir.
It's very confusing.
Yes, to say the least.
But after I did this, I found out, uh, in part of it, I tried to make it my, my floss.
All right.
You have to, um, to be included in that, you have to charge a property tax.
Okay.
And they do not, they do not charge property taxes and do a tax collection. They depend upon the county for their purposes, I think.
But, uh, basically what we're deciding first is whether to stay in or opt out.
Yes.
And, uh, if we stay in, then you can do the floss. If we opt out, then there's no floss. So, but one thing that you need to know about the floss is the, the floss amount will be the same as lost in the local option sales tax.
The distribution of it, yeah.
You know, the past year, it was 12.7 million dollars. So that's what would be generated coming in with the floss, the additional one cent sales tax. And coincidentally, the total property tax for the city and the county is 12.5 million. So that one cent floss would completely eliminate property tax for the city and the county.
Say that one more time, Larry, so that people can hear you.
Yeah.
Speak into your microphone so that it picks up on you too.
Well, you know, the, uh, local option sales tax now generates 12.7 million dollars over a year. Okay, that's, that's what we get in.
Yes.
So, all right, so if there's another one cent sales tax for floss, it's going to generate the same thing, 12.7 million. But the, the total property tax for the city and the total property tax for the county adds up to 12.5 million. So that, there's sufficient funds coming from floss that will help eliminate property taxes for the city and the county. So that, that's one factor that you need to remember of, if you opt out, there's no floss. But if you stay in, then they, the citizens can, can vote in floss down the road. So that's a.
They're can, from my understanding, and I don't mean to contradict you, but my understanding, and I could be inaccurate, is that you can impose a, a floss with the opt-out, but there has to be an intergovernmental agreement with the county. Is that, is that correct, Rob? Is that how you understand or am I wrong in that?
No, basically, if you. If you have a floating option sales tax, be it through House Bill 581 or your own independent floating, uh, sales tax.
Right.
Floating tax base, you, you can implement the floss. If you were, um, the inter-local agreement has to do with the implementation of the floss and who gets how much money.
Real percentage.
Uh, I haven't had a chance to talk with Larry. Uh, but again, the distribution of the floss, as I understand it, would be subject to negotiation as the lost.
Right.
And if we're looking and talking about eliminating, uh, property taxes imposed by the city, of course, you'd want to have enough of the floss in your pot in order to make that happen. Um, so there, some of the conversations that we've had about opting in, I'm sorry, staying in or opting out, um, the, the concerns actually is, of course, everybody's got, if everybody, everybody's going to have to stay in in order to get the floss. And county and all the cities will have to stay in the House Bill 581 in order to be able to implement a floss. If, let's, if, so if we opt out and the county, you know, uh, stays in, we can implement a floss.
Right.
So we all got to be in unison on that. And so we had the meeting on Thursday night, um, you know, I had an opportunity, had a short conversation with Tony McRae and said, hey, listen, we gotta make this thing. I've been, we've been talking about this for a couple, this December, mid-December. So the, one of the things that was discussed is that you can opt out and things just stay as they are. And then, uh, you can, by local legislation, implement your own floating option sales tax, I mean, floating tax, which then would authorize you to implement a floss. So whether you're in House Bill 581 and implement the floss or opt out of House Bill 581 and through local legislation, implement your own floss, I mean, your own, uh, floating tax, then you can then implement the floss. So there's two things, if you're, you talk about, thinking about opting out, naturally you're relying on your legislators, you know, to give you that local legislation, you know, for the floating. Uh, and then naturally you're relying on a supplement referendum to approve a floss. So there's no guarantee that you opt out, that you're ultimately, ultimately would get to the floss. You're going to have to have that vote approval for that.
Well, I, this, this is my, and I've thought and thought and thought and asked lots of questions and been thoroughly confused and think I understand it only to find out, no, that's, you know, something different. Um, and I know I've talked to a couple of y'all about this too. Um, and we were just talking about it today. You know, the citizens of our area, well, across Georgia, not just here, but across Georgia, asked for this with between 65 and 70% approving this constitutional amendment, depending on who you, who you get your information from, whether it's local information or state. And, um, it's, it's difficult to turn away from that, in my opinion. If that's what the voters and the residents prefer, I think we really need to look at that. That's they've spoken and we need to pay attention to that. I understand there are other options. There are opt-out options, um, with inter-governmental agreements, with negotiations on distributions and that kind of thing. So personally, I feel like we need to stay in, but it's a, it's a vote amongst the five of us on what's best for the community. Um, you want to add, I know you had, you and I had a good conversation about this today, saying the same thing.
Sure, yeah. I, I just have one question though, Rob. Say only one stays in and the others are opt out, then what happens?
Well, if, let's say the, uh, let's say this, the, the county stays in and we opt out, uh, that would mean that the county would not be able to implement a floating option.
And that's vice versa, the city stays in and the county?
Right. So y'all got to be in, in order to implement the floss. Now, you know, uh, you and I, it's up to y'all. Um, if you stay, if you stay in, then, uh, you're not worried about local legislation trying to get you, you know, floating and the things that Larry's talked about now about implementing the floss and the effect it would have on, uh, you know, on tax, you know, the taxes would be a great thing. So again, I think this, hate to reiterate this, but if you, uh, decide to, if you opt it out and you ultimately wanted to get to a floss, you'd have to get the local legislation that probably wouldn't be this year.
Yeah.
And then you would, then if you got your local legislation, then you would be hopefully getting the voters to approve the floss. But if you're in, you're still going to be that wild card about whether or not to implement floss or not. So the only downside, one of the downsides, I would think, if, uh, if you stayed in, you were kind of hoping that that floss may make up for not getting the increase in the fair market value. Um, so by only going up by the CPI rate, you may not be keeping up with true market value.
Let me give you an example, and I've sent this to the council and, and not the, well, I think I sent it to the entire council and, and members, a couple of the members of Urban Redevelopment, Downtown Development. IDP that built Nine Oaks Apartments next to the, um, the youth, the Bateman Youth Center. Um, their tax assessment, pre-reassessment for a low-income housing development, which was very nice, kept very well, right, what was exactly what we wanted. We had to get that in to increase the value of the property so then we could begin to find someone to come in and develop individual potentially owner-occupied properties. We had to get those values up with investment and that's what that accomplished. They had a $2 million assessment initially. They got a $10 million reassessment. That will bankrupt that project in six months. And if we can't get some relief on these tax evaluations, I don't know what we're going to do. You think about going from a $2 million, 50 or so unit, whatever the number of units is, based on income to a $10 million, they based it on market value for the numbers of units and they tried to appeal that or say that, no, we, this is, this, our, our income, our rents are based on income. This is a low-income housing project that we receive tax credit. We can't, we won't be able to attract other developers to come into the urban redevelopment area if those values are so significant. We've got to do something. So, um, they're really worried about it. They've hired an attorney, they're, they're, they're looking into, IDP is looking into how, and I've said, we will, you know, we will work with them to assist them in however we can to have those conversations. We recruited them, we brought them into the community, so we feel somewhat responsible for what happened. Um, they've been very happy in Tifton till their tax assessment and they said, we're not going to be able to afford that. So, um, and they're not getting much traction. So that's my concern. The, the citizens voted for this, like I said, let's call it 65, let's go, 65% of the citizens in Tifton County voted in favor of House Bill 581. We all went through the super shock of what happened with the reassessments and, and how that's going to happen and what's going to happen there. So, um, anything I think that we can do to continue to hear that concern from our residents and citizens and property owners and provide them relief is what I think we need to do. So however that is, um, whatever, so we need to make sure we're looking at all the options. And thank you for this, because I, I, I found this little spreadsheet you just, helpful to look at those numbers. So.
Well, one thing I want to add is before House Bill 581 was even passed, several cities come up with their own. And Atlanta was one of them.
Right.
And, uh, they, they limited that, uh, inflation factor to 2.6% a year. So there's several different things you can do if you do it on your own. You can even put, uh, a date where it ends and you have to renew it or whatever. So instead of taking the state's design, we can design our own, which.
If we don't take the state's design, then we need to be sure we are, are, are very transparent and clear on how this would work. We hear the, the, the request of the voters.
Yeah.
This is one option that, that the state legislature presented, but this is what we, we could do, so.
Yeah, if we opt out, we will generate our own to be able to do the floss to.
I just want to be real careful.
Take care of the property tax.
The other problem, of course, the other caveat to all that is once you're in, you're in forever. And that's, and I think that's probably something.
Yeah, it is.
The, you know, nobody has a crystal ball to determine, okay, what is going to be the end result of this legislation, so that people know. Um, there, there's just, there's still a lot of question. And the problem that you have, we have a lot of questions, you don't have a crystal ball to see what that's going to be in the future, it's hard to make a, an informed decision.
I know. Well, and who's to say that this couldn't be, you know, remanded in, you know, 10 years or something, say, well, now maybe you're not in it forever. You know, we're, we're going to do another constitutional amendment that changes House Bill 581.
Well, I, I've, I've heard at the lunch table about the, you know, the voters, you know, voting, and that certainly is something that we could consider, you know, um, I don't, the problem is, is that, you know, we're trying to get educated on it still, and how was the citizen supposed to be educated on before they want to fall off? But again, it's a very, it's a difficult decision for sure, uh, that there are, you know, there, there are options. And, and again, I, I know I've said this a number of times, when I stopped talking to Tony McRae, I said, my opinion, that they've got to decide what they're going to do. Because I believe that what they do is what we're going to have.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I, when I was talking to Tony, I know Jim was talking about trying to make a decision by the middle of the month. I told Tony, we can't wait till the middle of the month. We got to have three public hearings, uh, we got to, you know, do a press release, got to do a resolution. They're, they're really in, already in the time crunch. And I would want to think, you know, depending on what was decided, I was ready to rock and roll first of January with, you know, going to implement. first of January with, going to implement if we wanted to opt out, take those steps. So if anybody has communication with the county commissioner or the car or Tony McBrer, this decision really needs to be made because all of the cities, we're going to have to, you know, have the public hearings. They're going to have to have the public hearings, and it's going to really start getting into a big time crunch.
Rob, I believe that most citizens, when they went and voted, they were looking at, okay, with this bill, can't go up on my property tax no more than three percent, and that's why they voted for it. That's what, that's what I truly believe. That's why I voted for it, to be honest with you. Um, so once again, to my previous question, if we stayed in and the county opted out, we can't implement a floss. That's what you said, right?
That's right.
So then we would potentially be losing over three million, almost three point five million dollars if we can't implement a floss.
If they opt out, now if they opted in.
If they stayed in.
Then we could.
We could.
Is that right?
Yeah.
If everybody's in, the board of education doesn't count.
Yeah.
But if anybody's in, you can do the floss. If any one of us gets out, can't do the floss. And I say that, you know, remember that you can, by local legislation, down the road, implement, you know, your own floating tax such that then you would be eligible to implement a floss. So opting, you know, if you opt out, that is not going to end your ability to ultimately get to a floss.
But the voters will still have to vote it in, and they're going to look at it another time.
I mean, if you're in, they've got to vote in it, and if you're out, they've got to vote in.
I think basically, if you want the floss, you either got to stay in or opt out and design your own. It's one or the other.
I mean, if everybody that stay in, then can't implement a floss, right?
If somebody gets out, you will not be able to implement the floss. And that's when, you know, Thursday night, I was saying, I mean, we all got to be in this thing together to make a, you know, decision, are we going to stay in or are we going to opt out? So I, it's, you know, I wish I could tell you better about, you know, what's the ramifications. When I look at it, we don't like, you know, the tax assessments that we got on our last property ballot. But the bottom line is, if your tax on the value of the property is based on market forces, I mean, property value could go down, then what happens? It could be a CPI increase. There's a lot of questions. I just don't like the idea that the legislature has put this deadline on everybody. It seems a little, um, uncandid and almost forces you to, you know, make a decision that, without really knowing what the ultimate ramifications, and not allowing you to get out if you didn't like the results, like you see what's left.
All right, I've got another question. So let's use the scenario, everybody opts out. And a year or two goes by and we're, you know, now we're ready to input, you know, put a floss on the ballot for the voters to consider. How is that, is that floss distributed the same way as lost? Did I hear that correctly? Or is that, has to be renegotiated?
Remember, before you can get a floss on the referendum, you're going to have to implement your own local legislation.
And that's going to be approved by the legislature later?
Correct. So we say, hey, listen, we want to have a floating tax. And the legislature says, okay, you got what you want. And let's say we want to make it two point five percent and can't go up higher than two point five percent. It's going to sunset five years. It's okay, here, you got it. And then, then you then move forward with the implementing IGA with the county and then putting it on a referendum.
Well, it was Carter himself said at the meeting Thursday night, we don't have a good history with intergovernmental agreements between the two governing bodies.
You think?
Yeah. So that's, that's, that's concerning to me.
Well, the thing is, like, the interlocal agreement, yeah, we have some issues with several of them, but when you really get to look at the floss, I mean, it's the distribution that's the problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've been finding that for over ten years. So I don't know ultimately what you would be getting to when you did the floss and whether or not the rules would apply to the negotiating of the floss would apply to a floss.
I think it'll be a simpler negotiation on this because the floss totals twelve million seven and the property taxes total twelve million five, so. I mean, you can't deny that. I mean, that's going to eliminate both the city and the county's property taxes. Now, whoever gets the extra two hundred thousand, that's the question mark.
That so does staying in eliminate with the potential implementation of a floss in the future.
Yeah.
And that floss does not have to be approved by the legislature. It's already within the bill. Is that correct?
If you're in.
If you're in, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they just have to vote it in. The citizens have to vote it in.
The citizens of Tiftonville and Tifton would have to vote that in, yeah, not our legislators.
Right.
Which they would if we opted out. Legislators would.
So if you're in, everybody's in, then you can go forward with the IGA and pick a referendum for the floss.
Okay. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
It's clear as mud.
Okay.
Again, I would like either Larry or somebody to, you know, reach out to the county and see what, where they are on these discussions because the clock has definitely ticked.
Larry, do you mind?
Yeah, I'll get with Jim and see what they are thinking.
All right. Do you want to go into, any other questions? Anything else, Rob, we need to consider for House Bill five eighty-one? All right, Larry, do you want to go ahead and provide your city manager report?
Uh, yeah, we had, we had some protesters here Saturday, and I want to thank Chief Hyman for monitoring that situation. If he's in here, I don't know where he is, but they processed it out by seventy-five and Highway eighty-two just on immigration and ICE, but it was peaceful, so everything was good. And I think they processed it about two hours, so.
Okay.
Uh, looking at some projects that we're working on, the ALMEG twenty twenty-four, we're about to start on that. We just had our pre-construction meeting on that. I guess Reeves will start doing some work on curbs and milling. So you'll see some activity this month on that, on the streets. We're paving forty-sixth street, so they'll be all over the place. And then there's three other streets that next month they'll be doing some work on the water main. So you'll see some activity on that. On the Fullwood Park, we got a pre-construction meeting this Friday on it. So once Rhythm and Ribs is over, then we'll get to going on the new amphitheater in Fullwood Park. And that will, that's the last project that will use the rest of the ARPA funds that we got in, the six point two million that we got for COVID impact, and that'll finish that up. We've already got it committed. We had to have it committed by the end of December, so we have a PO and a contract. So that's taken care of. Our other ARPA funds, the four point one million grant with the state, we've got two other projects that's gotten underway, the wastewater blower replacements and the magnolia ditch drainage. And we just got reimbursed on those, on their first two payments. On that four point one million dollar grant, we're about halfway through that. So we've got to finish up all those projects by October thirty-one of twenty twenty-six. So we've got another twenty months to do that, so we should be fine on that. We finally got all these projects going. It's been two or three years we've been working on this. So that'll be a good thing to see. Then on TIA, the eighteenth street, street bridges, there's five bridges over there that are replacing. We've got all the easements taken care of. We're going to have a bid conference on February twelfth and then accepting bids on February twenty-sixth. So we're getting that project going. The Anthony Bateman Center, we're working on getting TC C C Y moved over there because the building they're in now that we own is about to fall in. So, so once we get them out of there, we can do something with that building. So it's, it's in bad disarray. We're, we're still looking for maybe a manager for the Bateman Center. I think we've got a good resume in this week that we're going to talk to, and so that's still a possibility. Events come out, we've got Second Saturday on Main Street, February eighth. The theater's got Johnny Cash coming this Saturday, so if you like Johnny Cash, he's coming. But that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions or anything?
That's good.
Okay.
When do you, do you actually go home at night and sleep, or do you just hear all the time? I said, do you go home at night and sleep, or you just hear all the time?
Yeah.
Lots going on.
Everything's cool.
I know. Listen, we got a great team.
I wouldn't get any sleep. Everything's good.
We have a great team that helps so much.
Yeah, we do. We have a bunch of great department heads, and I want to thank them because they handle it all.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
I told them to bring me their problems and we'll fix them.
There you go.
And they don't bring me very many, so they must settle most of them.
That's good. All right, thank you, Larry. That's a good report. All right, we'll conclude the workshop with mayor and council comments quickly, and then we'll go into the special call meeting. Anyone want to jump in there and go first?
Good.
You could. I want to recognize MJ. MJ has this picture in a painting, in a mural in Atlanta at Georgia's Own Credit Union Building in Atlanta, and it's a mural of people who have made an impact wherever they are. And MJ, our own MJ Hall, is in that mural. So MJ, I want to say congratulations. That's a real honor to have you representing Tifton in that mural. So as a, as a young man who's done so much already, we just want to say congratulations. That's a real honor. Glad to have you have to be there. Okay, we'll, if there are no other comments, we'll conclude the workshop. So that is over, and then we will call to order the special call meeting. We have one item, that's the resolution supporting the city's participation in the South Georgia Energy Authority. We talked about that at the workshop just now and talked about it before. So I will take a motion concerning that resolution.
Move to prove.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that does carry. Is there any other business that comes before the council or needs to come before the council this evening? Saying none, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.